Sorry.
Okay, good for us. So it better be a chance to get a chance to be the first person to do that. Okay, so I think we'll just start from the left and go to the right. So Latisha Suggs, you're on first, and you have two minutes for your opening statement.
It's on.
Yeah, okay. Hi, I'm Mila Trichus Suggs, running for as the incumbent for Port Angeles City Council, position one. I've lived in Port Angeles for fifty-plus years. I've lived and walked the history for these last fifty years, from the seventies on down to two thousand and twenty-four. I'm very familiar with things of our community, how our community has grown, how our community has been shaped, and how it's changed over the years, and how it's impacted the different economies, the different groups. And so I have that lived experience, and that intergenerational knowledge passed down from my great-grandmother to my grandmother to my mom, down to me, as that's what intergenerational knowledge is, having that information passed down, and also that information passed down from our elders through storytelling and through just sitting and listening to them. So I put my name back into the hat, continue to work forward, move forward with the progress that city council has made to address housing, to address issues associated with our watershed that we live in, our sole water source, to address infrastructure needs in our community, and then also to address and update the policies that up to about five years ago haven't been updated for a hundred years. So that's why I put my name back in there, and I think we have a great council that works together to make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next is James Taylor, also running for position one.
Hi, I'm James Taylor. I already got told I'm running for position one. I would like to thank the Columbia County Democrats for holding this debate. The city council is a nonpartisan position. It's elected to serve all the citizens of Port Angeles, not just the ones that agree with me. I'm the right person for the job and desire your support. Famous Democratic strategist James Carville was pontificated as "the economy's stupid." Over the course of the last couple of years, I have watched the council ignore this sage advice. They raised the sales tax, and in 2026 preliminary budget, they proposed raising it again. Within that same budget proposal, they're proposing raising property taxes by $2.22 cents per thousand assessed value. Meanwhile, city spending has increased thirty-two percent over the course of the last four years, and employment within the city has increased by eighteen percent. This is all within the city that hasn't grown. City raised building fees, permitting fees on single-family homes by $10,000 a year in 2024. On the spending front, our purchases go to out-of-town vendors. A lot of these where we buy all of our vehicles. Seattle-based consulting firms did our comprehensive plan. The timber industry represents five to seven percent of our economy. Protecting forests in wilderness on the Olympic does that protective forest in wilderness is a million acres, yet my opponent made anti-timber industry comments such as "legacy forests," which is an overnight plan to remove seventy-seven thousand acres.
Thank you. So you will get music in then. And now we have Drew Schwab, who is with position two.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Drew Schwab, and as was said, I'm running for position two. I've called Port Angeles home for more than twenty years, and I've owned the downtown store Anime Cat just a few doors down since 2010. I've served on the city council planning commission as well as the safety advisory board, and those experiences have shown me what it takes to build a community from the ground up. I'm not just your neighbor. I'm a business owner, volunteer, and someone who has stepped up whenever the city needed a voice. The voice says our top concerns right now are housing, homelessness, public safety, and our local economy. Families earning $94,000 a year still struggle to afford a two-bedroom home. That's why I've supported higher density development, waiving permit fees, offering tax exemptions, and updates to our housing action plan. We've made progress, but there's still more work to be done. I've backed zoning reforms, affordable housing initiatives, and partnerships with the police department and the rediscovery program to connect people with services. I'll continue working on housing, access to services, and community collaboration. I've supported efforts to boost the recruitment of emergency personnel, supported the joint public safety facility, expanded the downtown resource officer program, and backed community paramedicine. And I'll continue supporting the Port Angeles Police Department through strategic investments, policy reforms, and collaborative initiatives. As a small business owner, I know how vital a strong local economy is. I've supported shoe lining permitting, providing grants, and representing the city on the North Olympic Peninsula Recompete Coalition, which has secured $35 million for jobs, infrastructure, and workforce development. I believe in practical solutions that work. Housing, homelessness, safety, and a strong economy are what I've been working on and what I will continue to work on. As your neighbor, business owner, and public servant, I ask for your trust and your vote to keep Port Angeles moving forward together.
Thank you. You stopped before the music started. Okay, Mark Hodgson is with position three.
Good evening, Mark Hodgson here, running for position three on Port Angeles City Council. I moved to Port Angeles with my family in the early nineties, where I've been ever since, with a short stint in the Navy, and then after that, working my way back here to get back onto the peninsula, and then finally back into Port Angeles. I went to high school here. As I said, after high school, I joined the Navy. I was in the Navy for about seven years. I deployed a couple times overseas. After that, I began a career as a law enforcement officer, where I've been for the past twenty years. And, you know, look, this whole experiment for me has been a adventure in how can I get involved? You know, COVID came around, and I was looking for a way to get involved beyond my nine-to-five job, and so I started volunteering at the food bank. I started getting on boards and commissions such as the homelessness task force, where I served for two years, the city parks and recreation commission, as well as nonprofit boards like Habitat for Humanity, and the Peninsula's View Resolutions Center. So, you know, I'm here now because what I want to do is I want to continue that service. I want to continue that service that I began when I was nineteen years old, put a uniform on, and served our country overseas, and bring that service here to our community. I want to lend my expertise. I want to lend the lived experience that I've had, and I want to put into practice the networking and information that I've gathered as a board member and as a community member here in Port Angeles. We're looking forward to the election and hoping for all of your support. Thanks.
And Mimi Smith for our position four is next.
Actually, I do have a last name. It's Smith or Warack. I'm using all my names this week.
Oh, okay. Well, that's I just read it right up here. Okay, thank you.
So how do you measure the success of an incumbent? Is it enough to simply recite city staff accomplishments? City and Port Angeles is a council-manager government, the kind of government that hoped to fix the crimes of mayoral entrenchment, frontiers of nepotism and graft. The idea was to mimic an efficient corporation. The voters are the shareholders. The council is the board of directors. They select a ceremonial chairman of the board. Together, they hire and manage a CEO, the city manager. Port Angeles Incorporated in 1890, re-scored, and two years later, in 1952, they adopted the council-manager government. Our first nominated mayor was called the chairman of the board in meeting minutes. For fifty years, there was a strict two-year limit for ceremonial mayors, just like eighty percent of all towns in America. Kate's our first multi-term mayor. I guess there's no respect for tradition or history. So what does the council do? They appoint and direct the city manager. They draft and pass legislation and ordinances. They review and manage the city budget. They are tasked to negotiate, contemplate, and sometimes say no. I think they spend just for the sake of spending because they never say no. They confuse motion with action. This burdens us and our children with bad decisions made today. Our city council is nonpartisan and should focus on local issues. There is not a liberal Port Angeles. There is not a conservative Port Angeles. There's just Port Angeles. We need to unify to save our community. So vote for a change. Thank you.
And we have Kate Dexter, also running for position four.
Thank you for having us this evening. I've been honored to serve the people of Port Angeles on the city council for almost eight years, and as you heard from my opponent, most of that is mayor. I've worked closely with community leaders, staff, and fellow council members to pass legislation that addresses the city's most pressing needs. I'm especially proud of the work we've done to reduce barriers to constructing affordable housing and supporting our most vulnerable community members through programs like rediscovery and the creation of the community paramedicine program, and more recently, supporting the creation of Operation Shielding Hope. While I continue, while we continue to make progress in these critical areas, our city faces new challenges that require thoughtful, steadfast, and experienced leadership. That experience is more important than ever, as we work with dwindling state resources and uncertain and more and more unlikely federal support, at the same time as many federal safety nets are slashed, making life harder for our neighbors. During the recent Indian Creeks bill, I worked through the weekend with staff, our congresswoman's office, and the governor's office. I was on the phone at ten-thirty that Saturday evening, working to connect staff to state department directors to get clarification and support necessary to continue to protect our water supply. I'm looking forward to continuing my record of leadership, supporting our community partners, nonprofits, first responders, local coast guard members, and continuing our city-to-city relations with Victoria. In my next term, I will focus my work on supporting nonprofits and the private sector to increase housing options, enhance our economic development by leveraging our region's unique resources, continuing our municipal code update, responding to climate change by safeguarding our water supply, and diversifying our electrical grid, supporting public safety while ensuring Port Angeles is included in the $100 million public safety grant, and making sure we continue to improve our infrastructure. We've made significant progress, and there are real challenges ahead in all of these areas, especially as we navigate the changing federal funding landscape and the potential for other federal policy impacts. I'm committed to work with our community partners so that together we can work to implement meaningful solutions and move our community forward.
Nothing amusing today. So now you're all given one minute for rebuttal statements for anything you've heard. So we'll go in reverse order, and we'll start with Kate and go this direction. One minute rebuttal.
Sure. I will start by saying that the mayor, I'm not the first, I'm not the first multi-term mayor, but that I'm aware of. I think there was someone else. I don't remember who it is right now. And the mayor is selected by the council. So I didn't choose myself to be mayor. I accepted the nomination and was chosen by my peers on the council. So if there is a history of not doing that, our council didn't pay attention to that and chose to go a different direction. I also just want to touch on a couple of things that were raised by the folks in their openers. Property tax increases limited to one percent by state law. Sales tax increases have been passed by voters, not by council, and I think when we look at the expense side of things, it's also important to look at the revenue, and we have staff that have been especially good at seeking grants to pay for a lot of the projects that those expenditures represent. And I think my time is up. I didn't get the music, but I'll stop there.
All right. So we have a one-minute rebuttal time. If you'd like to. Okay, well, now sit down.
So I don't have a specific rebuttal because my opponent is not here, but that's actually what I would like to comment on. Contrary to what it might seem like, I'm not actually unopposed. My opponent announced at the end of July that he was no longer running for city council. However, the state deadline is actually in May. So despite his statement on Facebook of no longer running, he's actually no longer campaigning. He is in fact still in the voters' guide, and he is or will still be on the ballot. So I would request you vote for me. Should he get enough votes and beat me, he'll either get to be sworn in, or council will have to appoint someone. It does not default to me because he chose not to continue running.
So rebutting the rebuttal, if you go look at, it's in May. I'm sorry, it's not the right date. I think it's May 21st. I probably have it wrong. The city council came up with their wish list of all the things they wanted to add for 2026. If you go look in there, there's a line item that says they're going to request a one percent sales tax increase. Voters may approve it, but it's a goal of the city to pursue it. Also in there, they're separating out fire from the rest of the city budget. And right in that report, it says $2.22 and a half cents for splitting this out. So even though my esteemed colleague over here said, the thing she said, that's not accurate. It's in their request. Now, I stood up there, took my shoe off and pounded it up on table, and said, "What did city council say anything about trying to save any money?"
Thank you. I want to clarify a statement my opponent here said about my anti-rhetoric against the timber industry, and I've never been anti-rhetoric against the timber industry. During this whole time that we've talked about protecting the sole water source of the Owa watershed, I've always said I'm not against timber harvest. I want to protect the Owa watershed, and that's the timber harvest that we need to focus on and maintain those standards to protect our sole water source of water. I'm not against timber harvesting outside of the Owa watershed. My stepdad was a log truck driver. My son is a log truck driver. So my family has benefited from the timber industry. I've never said I'm against timber harvest. I also want to clarify too that the capacity building was part of our two-year strategic plan. The city does a two-year strategic plan, and we needed to build capacity to address the needs of the permits that were being, that we knew were going to be coming forth. So we needed staff. We needed to build up staff for permitting issues.
Thank you. Okay, so now, as we said, we're going to start with pre-submitted questions. And I'll find out if anybody here wants to ask a question, then we'll go on Zoom and then go back to pre. Okay. So the first pre-submitted question, and we will start with Patricia, and then the next question will be James, the next question. So we'll rotate as we go. So the first question, and remember, we have two minutes to answer this. What effects, if any, will impact the city of Port Angeles budget due to the government shutdown?
That's a really good question. Right now, I would be talking with council, or not council, talking with staff, Nathan, and guiding him that we have to look at our federal grants because it's a federal, well, it trickles down. So what federal grants do we have? Then Recompete is actually a federal grant, so we have to reach out to our point of contact to find out what that is. Now, with that said, not every agency has been furloughed. I just reached out to Federal Highways today to talk about bringing a federal management for Jamestown, and asked him, does the furlough, does the shutdown impact him? And he said, no, Federal Highways has a multi-year funding agreement. So none of their staff have been furloughed. But he did say US DOT, it probably impacted. So we have to reach out to our federal agent and agencies and find out. So yeah, there's going to be a trickle down. The other impact, maybe not to city council, but it's going to be to partners that we partner with, like Peninsula Behavior, or not Peninsula Behavior, the Peninsula Housing Authority. It's going to be the food bank. These are all nonprofits that work and provide services to our community. Those are organizations that we're going to have to work to partner with to see if we can find some solution or work with them and advocate on their behalf to find funding to help them or encourage local communities to kind of dig a little bit deeper during camp, food can drive, stuff like that. So yes, we will be impacted, and we're going to have to research what grants will be impacted.
James?
I think it's unfortunate that local politics and national politics, it all mixed up together. But my observation is that city really needs to focus on staff reductions in order to be able to accommodate reductions in federal funds. I haven't sat there and done the analysis, and I know that next week it's going to be something completely different coming out of Washington. So I think it's going to stay the course as far as is there an impact? But the city still is overstaffed, and we haven't grown, but yet the city continues to grow. And they really, the city really needs to focus on being more efficient and getting rid of things that really don't accomplish much. We have, we have a forester. We have less than eleven square miles of city. Yet we have a full-time forester. We are going to go through a rezoning process, which has got to be outsourced because it's, you know, we got to hire, you know, some Seattle-based consultant, and that's going to eat up a lot of time. And if you think about it, we don't build anything in this city, so why are we going through a rezoning process? We're really off-topic, and the answer is, I'm just going to take a wait and see.
So if the question is specifically regarding the current shutdown that we have right this second, my fast and dirty answer is I have no idea. I've only been on council for less than two years. While I do have an understanding of a lot of the larger federal grants and how the federal grants play into state grants, which will then trickle down to us, I don't know where, at what process, which grant may be impacted. So in that regard, for immediate impact, I don't know. I do know that the city has put together a list, I don't have it memorized, of potential issues with any sort of federal reduced funding because of the recent federal government's push to cut on grants. So I do know we have that list. I just don't know which ones of those will be impacted right away. I also don't know what kind of intergovernment contracts and connections that we have may be impacted because of the furlough. For example, I have no idea how this impacts border patrol because I haven't had a chance to read the news today. So I'm not sure who all and what agency is directly impacted likewise Parks Department. As far as Recompete goes, unless I'm mistaken, I am pretty sure that Recompete actually already received its funding because we verified whether or not that could be potentially pulled back from any of the other federal grants that might be reduced or removed from the current administration. So I don't believe Recompete specifically would be impacted by this.
More uncertainty. I mean, but that's what we've been dealing with here for several months. We've already been dealing with uncertainty with grants, right? And so like, what are grants? Grants are your taxpayer dollars brought back to the community to benefit the community as a whole. And we've been dealing with that uncertainty right now. We're just going to deal with more of that in the government shutdown. Not only that, we're dealing with families of our, who are federally employed, who are going to lean on services like the food bank even more, and they're already stretched to capacity now. So, you know, Drew brings up a good point with border patrol. We also have coast guard here, Department of DHS, and other federal employees. And, you know, there's a trickle down effect. When families suffer, businesses suffer, landlords suffer, and community at large suffers. So I think that's what we can expect from a prolonged government shutdown. You know, here's the hoping that it's something that bounces back and can be resolved quickly.
I'm going to come from a whole different viewpoint. You know, there's a lot of towns in this country that have elected auditors that report to the city council and help them wade through the budget issues. We could certainly have a citizen financial oversight committee made up of people in the town who are good with numbers because a $156 million budget is an awful lot to expect city council members to even crock. It's hard to figure out how much that money actually is. We, there's nowhere in our budget that says what the unfunded mandates are for an employee. When you hire an employee, it just doesn't go on. It's not just we pay him so much now, or it's how much are you going to pay him for his entire life? Because once they retire, they get retirement. I find that never mentioned anywhere in our budget. We need a better grasp of our budget. I think there's a lot of waste in our budget, and I think that we should learn how to stand on our own feet and not rely on grants that see them as bonuses when they do come across. I, you know, this financial limp-wristedness is really annoying to me because, you know, we do have a huge government. I mean, we're only 30,000 people. We have way too many people hired. They make a lot of money. They have really great benefits. So it's like, you know, let's look at what we're actually doing and see how we can afford to have our city and have our city funded since it's an uncertain economic future. We may be going into a depression. I mean, we're certainly going into a recession. We're certainly in stagflation right now. So it's like, you know, I think we need better eyes on this.
So the short term, I think most of what I would answer had been called out already by other folks, but I think worth repeating. Certainly, there are potential for federal grants to be impacted, but I think more importantly, when I think about what does it mean for our community, we have a number of federal employees here who are likely to be furloughed. We are seeing, we have seen that before. Parks Department, Parks and Coast Guard in particular are two of the larger ones. The city in the past has stepped up with the offer of not charging interest on utility accounts for people who live in town and can't afford to pay their bills, knowing that they're having to potentially now figure out how to stretch very little money to cover their housing and medication, food, all of those things. I certainly agree that the social service safety net is already stretched, and it's going to be further stretched. I think there's potential impact at the hospital with their reimbursement, though that's probably a different conversation. I think this one may be worse than in the past because they're also saying that furloughs may not be able to be, the money may not be paid back. And so we've already seen potential impacts at the college today, and that those aren't set in stone yet, but the discussion is happening, that people who are paid with federal grants may be furloughed and then may not ever be hired back if that money doesn't get repaid. So I think this is the beginning. I don't know. I think we're in the middle somewhere, but as far as the federal, the budget shutdown, if it doesn't get, we don't come to some resolution soon with payback, I think we're going to see this get worse, and hopefully the city can step up where possible to help make things a little bit easier for people.
Is there anybody in the audience who wants to ask their question?
I'm going to give you a mic just so that people at home can hear.
And we have thirty seconds to ask your question. Yeah.
So Wasnot was at the commissioner work session on Monday, and they talked about the White Creek and Peabody Creek-ish passage projects that will probably be a few years out. How do we work with the tribes and negotiate an outcome that allows us to bypass the property destruction and everything else that's going to come with those projects in downtown Port Angeles?
So James, you are the first person to answer the question.
Okay, so we somehow have to build a better relationship with our tribal partners. Is there something that would appease Jamestown? Because it's their name on White Creek that would say, hey, maybe we put a fish ladder up Morse Creek. Maybe we do some other kind of fish enhancement projects. But these, these issues with our, it seems like we have a lack of communication with the tribe or a lack of relationships with the tribes, because there's, there's all kinds of issues that, you know, we need to somehow get this to be a mutually cooperative relationship and not a, it just feels like it's a standoff kind of relationship. I'm thinking of the road up Hot Springs Road. That's held up over some reason, and, you know, you know, only the one side of the story. I don't hear what the tribe's side of the story is. I've only heard, you know, that it's being held up and, you know, figures are pointing. And, you know, you know, only the one side of the story. I don't hear what the tribe's side of the story is. I've only heard um, you know, that it's being held up and, you know, figures are pointing. We need to have a relationship that does something with the big giant hole downtown. Okay, so the hotel isn't being built at this moment. Can we have a relationship? And the first thing that comes to my mind is like a fish market. You know, especially when you go out and you see all the crabs being harvested. You know, there's salmon being harvested by the tribes. Maybe we have a fish market. Maybe just a park with picnic tables. But right now, we just have a big ugly hole and we're not, you know, I, you know, we don't have a good relationship that says, hey, can we do something that's mutually beneficial?
I really wish I was the last person to this question.
I wish Latricia was at last.
Yeah, yes. Two of us are both wishing Latricia was first on this one. It would have been way easier to go off that one. Um, short answer, I have no idea. I really don't. Um, to my knowledge, I believe only one tribe municipality uh have been able to work on our agreements um to do something in lieu of the fish pa, fish passage where Washdot did it. Um, of all of the projects that have been done for those, only one tribe municipality, I think, actually come to an agreement. So first off, um, I'd like to know if we could come to an agreement. Uh, obviously, there has to be some sort of stumbling block there. Um, if no one else has had these sort of agreements. Um, but I do think that a question and conversation that should be had, is there a more useful, better return on investment? Both monetarily for businesses, but also for the environment um than putting in these fish passion passages um in these locations? And so that's a conversation that I would love to have. Um, I haven't seen the notes from the I assume county commissioners uh meeting yet. So I don't, I know Washdot was there to give a presentation. Um, I suspect they will be tomorrow at um uh Limited Peninsula Tourism Commission that usually gives similar presentations and heads up. Um, and I will be in attendance for that one tomorrow. So um, if you ask me on Friday, I might have a better idea.
I don't mind piggybacking off of Trudy with his I don't know because like, I don't know, it's a big deal, you know? But what I do know is that we all need to be involved and you need to have a council, a council um at large and a city staff at large that engages with the tribe, engages with businesses and protects individual and business property owners as well as protecting our environment. You know, tho- those are values that not only make the tribe successful, but they make the city successful. So I think what you want, you know, what I want, is somebody who's obsessively involved in that. And you need a council that's willing to go back to staff and say, this is still on my mind. This is still a plan. So that you reach out to people and you ask this question, hey, is this on your radar? And it's not. We get it on the radar and we give the information back to you and we tell the interested parties, show up, we need your voice and you hold us accountable. So look, I don't, I don't have a silver bullet answer for that. But what I do know is that I think that we can come to, you know, there's enough time until these projects happen. We can come to an agreement that's mutually beneficial. And that's if we continue to bring people to the stakeholders, the members of the community, business, tribal sector and um local government.
Okay, I'll do another I don't know, except I do remember what it was like when we closed the Hood Canal Bridge for an entire summer. Because I had a business, I had a retail business downtown Oakdaley. The year before, we made about ten thousand a month. That summer of the Hood Canal Bridge, I made a thousand dollars a month. It put me out of business. It put a lot of people out of business. There was a huge, huge, uh, there was no support. There was a huge economic impact in this community when we closed the Hood Canal Bridge because people just did not come out. And when they did come out, they didn't want to stay here long. They wanted to get right to Canada as quick as they could. So um, you know, shutting down one-on-one is, especially in those key areas. It, it's been bad this summer. We've seen some, not so much drop, but if, you know, I also feel sorry for the guy who built the hotel there because we're going to tear down that hotel for what impact? You know, I think that this is just, it's, it's a noble idea, but, you know, I think there needs to be something else in lieu. We need to look at all the things that it disrupts.
So um, my understanding, which may be your understanding, and I think this not, I don't want to say your question is about it. I just was going to articulate that um, the, the actions being taken are a result of the Supreme Court decision um saying brought by the tribe, the lawsuit brought by the tribes. Um, so from a local perspective, I think advocacy is the first thing I would suggest that we can do. At a BURBOM, our legislator is on the committee that is working on this, these projects. And I think um is aware that there are always cost-benefit analysis being done and that some of these may may not seem like the best cost-benefit analysis. Um, I think the two that you raised um are the two that for me um, I do stop and think, is the benefit that we're going to take down potential lodging slash housing? I don't know. I'm not, I haven't spent enough time, but it is one that made me question um the, the process. And whether there is an opportunity to, to really, for example, bring back other creeks that we know we can get fish in that aren't going to be so disruptive. And have really thriving creeks and, and maybe forego a couple. Um, that said, I think we do have a very good relationship with the tribe. I'm not going to tell them that they have to do something. I, I think we don't want to um I think we need to have this conversation separate, I guess, than, than other conversations that have been suggested um in the answer of this question. Um, but I think we certainly could talk to both tribes. I think um the city of Port Angeles has a very strong working relationship with Lower Elwa Column Tribe. Um, we don't work as closely with Jamestown because they're not um as close to our jurisdiction. But we certainly, um, I think I have a good relationship with their um leadership. Uh, certainly Latricia does. Um, so I think it's worth a conversation potentially. Um, and I think advocacy at state level for really looking at what we're going to, oh, sorry, I'll stop talking now. I'm out of time.
So Ellen, are there any questions online? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Latricia. Thanks for reminding.
That's okay, Norma. Um, that project, um, the area, um, the, the, the tribe um that we would communicate most with was Lower Elwa Jamestown is not part of that, what's going on there. I, I guess in the bigger scheme of things, when you look at it, because Kate summed it up very nicely. Thank you, Kate. It is a mandate from the courts to the state of Washington that you have to um make. You have to replace your fish barriers, which are your culverts that are acting as barriers for salmon that can't get upstream. Um, and, and so you can make of this as, you know, it's a cost benefit. And, and um, I could tell you behind the scenes, I have had conversations with um staff that work with Lower Elwa talking about this project and, and other mitigation things. So, so me having that background, those connections established over twenty-four-year work in um in environmental policy. I'm able to have those conversations and plant some of those seeds. Now, we can't tell them what to do because it is a mandate. And it's kind of complicated because that one project that Drew mentioned, there was one project that was able to do something different. But I believe they had to get the buy-in from a lot of other tribes to make that happen. And I think that same thing would happen here. Um, the city does have a good working relationship with Lower Elwa Column Tribe and with their staff. We work with them. We'll be working with them on a project on the Elwa River. We're working with them on a project, a barrier project down here um by Rainier. Um, so we do have a good working relationship with them and it is strong. Um, and um, we also have a great working relationship with Jamestown. But this specific project is mandated by Washington State and, and the decision of the courts. So, thank you.
So, uh, now we'll move on to my other question. Do you have any online questions, Ellen?
Um, look there in here. Yes.
Okay. What is the online question? Is that it up there? As a city councilperson?
Yes.
What strategies would you use to build strong partnerships with local business owners? And what benefits could the city realize because of those partnerships? So it's appropriate that through your number one.
Awesome. I'll get first. I have to go get that.
Yes.
So what's your, exactly. So I, I'm going to keep looking behind me since it's right here on the screen. It makes it easier for me. So as a city councilperson, what strategies would you use to build strong partnerships with local business owners and what benefits the city have for realizing those? Um, one of the first things I would like to do is start having a business liaison staff member again. We used to have one uh about twelve years ago, give or take. Um, actually Nathan West was the one for the Downtown Association. Um, during a budget cut at some point, that position no longer exists. Or at least no staff member uh has working hours to be able to do that. So one of the first things I'd like to do is be able to actually have a business liaison individual again. Um, with that, when I did push for the business licensing, I'll totally take credit for that. Um, part of that motion included what those funds would go for. And one of the things on that list was a business liaison individual to be able to connect with the different business organizations. We have P A B A, we have Waterfront District, uh Association Realtors, uh Chamber, um et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like to be able to see us uh working on those more often. We do have some decent outreach during the comprehensive plan process. I'm one of three of the council members who've been serving on the comprehensive plan process. Um, we specifically went out to stakeholders, which included a lot of the business organizations in town to be able to get their perspective and their information. And I think all of this is really important to be able to know what's going on. Um, I am the only business owner on the city council right now. And so I try to take it as my responsibility to give the point of view of local businesses. But I also recognize that I'm a small business, but by federal standards, everyone in town's a small business. Um, but I'm also a retail business and that does not necessarily speak to the needs of the service industries, uh the manufacturers and likewise. So the relationships we can forge there will help us be able to pass more efficient and better laws and regulations to make sure we can help support them.
Show up for them, like step one, right? Like the business community and our industry, they are directly tied to our city's success. So I think it's important to want is just show up for them and go out and have conversations with them. You know, it was mentioned today, or just, just a moment ago, talking about the business licensing fee. And so my question was, cool, like I understand a little bit about what the city gets out of that. What do the businesses get out of that? I had a conversation, I was buying my girlfriend flowers the other day. And I said, hey, I'm running for city council, you know, do you have any feedback for me? Is there anything you can tell? And the, the flower, the florist said, yeah, when I got up this morning, I came in to open my shop and there was a biohazard in front of my door. And they said, I cleaned that up. And I was in shock. I said, you cleaned it up? And they said, yeah, I cleaned it up. And so my question is, great, we're going to do this licensing fee, seems reasonable. You know, and the business owners that I've talked to, there seems to be a significant amount of buy-in for it, but what do they get for it? So what I want is more pressure washing of the streets. I want your city services maintaining that right-of-way and that small little part that leads from right-of-way into your um, your business to be taken care of at the appropriate time by the city. So in this example, somebody coming out with P P E should be able to come out there professionally clean it so that it's safe for foot traffic, so that it's safe for business, um, people frequenting businesses. And it creates a more conducive and safe environment. You know, the other thing that I'll say is we have, as council members, have to show up for the business owners. But I think that we can create a, an economic development commission, a citizen advisory commission that helps those business owners and interested parties show up for the city. So that we're receiving and we have direct communications with those people that are trying to improve our business district, districts throughout the city.
Well, I've had businesses in downtown Port Angeles. I've had businesses outside of them. I have a business outside of downtown Port Angeles. I can say Port Angeles is not business-friendly. It hasn't been business-friendly as long as I've been in town, and that's since nineteen ninety-four. Um, it's, it's complicated, it's confusing. If you buy a business that's already existing, you have to get the occupancy permit, you have to have the fire marshal come out, you have to have all the stuff. Which is complicated, it's confusing, and there are no guides. No one will lead you through any of this. Um, you know, we need a really good city website. It, it kind of tells you all the little steps. Um, there's a lot of opportunity for businesses in town to, to be on state registry so the city can do business with them. But I'll tell you, when you run a business, you're already dealing with taxes, you're dealing with sales tax, you're dealing with employees, you're dealing with employee costs. It's, you need someone to help. Yes, a business liaison would be lovely. Um, at the same time, um, the city pays, you know, I had a business. I had, every time I turned around, there was some new fee someone was, was telling me I had to pay. Um, we need to start looking at businesses as our bread and butter. We need to start helping our businesses in every way possible. And yeah, yeah, something dies on your front porch, you get to clean it up. That's the way it's always been. Um, when snow comes, you get to clean your own snow or you get a fine. We need to do everything we can to help entrepreneurs in this town. And I think that the city needs to stop hiring outside consultants and start looking in-town for people because we have so much talent here. It's unbelievable. I think we should have an Alms Buzman who can actually smooth things out. And I think that we should um, we should be helping, we should be helping businesses. We should go out and talk to all of them all the time.
All right. I think one of the things I appreciate about this question is um, it's important to me to be able to buy things locally when I can. And so if we don't support the local businesses, then we can't do that. Um, and we have to go outside, um, or things just aren't available. And I think there are things that just, you know, you said homecoming and everyone's like, where do I get a suit? Or, or young men to go to the dance? Well, Walmart. Um, um, maybe some things with Swains. So that's a challenge. Goodwill. Um, so I think um, some of the things that um we can do when possible is, is contract with local folks. Uh, we um are looking at the, um, we have, the council hasn't adopted it yet, but we're looking at contracting with a local company for our tourism um support now. And so I think that's really exciting that we have someone who, who is well-qualified, knows the community, and I think will offer a value added for that reason. Um, I think when we have a thriving community, certainly it helps with revenue, with their place to put people to shop. It helps with sales tax revenue. One of the reasons Swim has so much money is they have all the big box stores. A lot of them didn't have to close during COVID, so they just have all this sales tax revenue. I don't want a big box store downtown. I want local stores. But those stores also help generate revenue um in sales tax when people come through, gives people a reason to come and, and be in town. We do support local businesses, I think, by having a representative on the chamber board. Um, we also now have a checklist for occupancy um inspections, so I think we're working on improving efficiencies. Um, certainly when businesses, buildings are full, um, things look better. Um, I'm remembering why I recognized one of the audience members from CrossFit, you know, the, the building where Storm came CrossFit was a disaster and it's lovely now. Um, and I think that's a great example of, of local businesses. The last thing I want to say before the timer is what we are doing specifically with the um revenue from the um fee is supporting the Downtown Resource Officer, which was requested by businesses.
Latisha and then James.
Well, I, I guess I want to start with um, one, one of the things, I know that business owner's time is money also. Um, and I would like to see more of us um without violating Open Public Meeting Act or maybe identifying it as this, I don't know if we could do it as a special meeting, but without um violating Open Public Meetings Act. Is have and establish a business tour where instead of you meeting, businesses meeting one-on-one with each individual person. And where it's less efficient for you as a business owner, is to have council kind of do a, a business tour and, and and, and talk with the folks and, and get more feedback. I mean, I think something like that is, is feasible to do. Um, I, I do like, um, Drew, I love your suggestion of, you know, business liaison position. Um, and we did have somebody on the Chamber of Commerce, but more somebody, true, but he, he has a point. He, his, his is retail sales and, but there's other industries and stuff. But we also partner with Collin County Economic Development um so that we can work with them. so that we can work with them, so that they can partner with, um, small businesses in our community to, to grow and, and to expand their footprint, um, or either start a business, um, and, and look at everything that's needed for that. So, so that's one thing that, um, the city does. Also our zoning, you know, we need to look at, again, expanding the, the corridors, um, encouraging where you can have additional, um, court, um, business development. It, it, it's, it's a tough question, it's a good question. And I think, again, we have to work with organizations as partners to make things happen, because just the city can't do it alone. We have to work together with these other organizations. Thank you.
So, I was wondering of having a tour where potentially city council could go meet with businesses. There was actually one organized by the junior taxing districts to go meet with Herman Brothers, Pacific Hardwood, and then Interfor. And, um, they reached out to us, all three county commissioners were there. Um, but the city was, with the exception of Ben, there, there was nobody from the city. None of, uh, Drew, Drew said he had an excuse, so, you know, he has an excuse absence. But none of the city council met with these businesses. Um, I then turned around and met with them again. Um, I'm, I'm involved with, uh, Port Angeles Business Association, I'm the vice president. Uh, one of my roles is to bring speakers, businesses, but also education, hospital boards before a group of people that we can actually listen to the different, uh, owners. Now, one of, one of the things you run into is a perception problem. And it's, it's been caused by, uh, let's blame the past rather than the current. Um, but there was a real perception by businesses that the city is really hard to deal with. Um, Platypus was trying to move one telephone pole. They wanted to convert it to a fiberglass pole, so it didn't need guideline wires. That, that just got bogged down in the city. There was a coffee shop over by the airport, two years, just to open a coffee shop. We, we have, we have these lofty goals of a perfect city, but just let the businesses do their thing and get out of the way. The answer, the answer from the city needs to be, yes, you can, and not, oh, well, let's see how we can regulate you.
No, that's, that's it, okay. Um, so now we're back to, uh, the pre-submitted questions. So Mark, you're first on this one. So we already had a question about the federal government in terms of shutdown. This is a different look at the federal government funding. So can you point to examples in town that were funded by the Build Better, Build Back Better bill? That was the former.
I'm gonna tell you that I don't think I can, because as I travel outside of the area, I see it well advertised in other places. And I love seeing that, I love seeing accountability and how our federal dollars are coming back and, and helping our local community. So I can't, uh, I, I can't off the top of my head think of an answer to that question, something specific that came back from the, that was bipartisan bill, by the way. And, uh, yeah, off the top of my head.
Nope, but I can tell you in the past, all the different federal funds that built things and how they certainly don't work now. Um, we had fiber optic put in during Obama. And that fiber optic was given by the city to one company, to C P I, who then turned around and sold it to Way. So it was basically like we had a toll road that was put on one-on-one, and that was sold. So we completely shot ourselves in the foot when it came to being able to have big software companies come out here, or even anybody who needed to have a big bandwidth upload. Um, we've done a lot of missteps. So, you know, we have a lot of odd ways that money goes, and it takes so many information requests to find out where money goes. I don't know where this one goes, and I haven't had the time.
So I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure Recompute was part of the Build Back Better bill. Um, so that's thirty-five million dollars to Collin County. And there are projects happening in the city of Port Angeles as a result of that. We'll probably hear more about that, um, from Drew, who is our representative, um, on the, um, county board, um, for that project. Also, I would be hazard giving a guess, but I think that some of the funding for joint public safety facility may have come from that, but I don't remember. But I'm pretty sure Recompute, um, is a part of the Build Back Better Act, um, which is not specifically for the city, but the city certainly benefits.
I Build Back Better, I'm like Infrastructure Reinvestment Act, is that the scene? I think, I think it was twenty twenty-three, Build Back Better, twenty twenty-one, I know it was Biden. Um, I, I'm sure that our community, maybe not specifically downtown Port Angeles, there was funding that came through, again, back through barrier, um, over projects, um, that reached out here on the Olympic Peninsula. Um, tribes are, are pretty, um, efficient and successful. Usually there's a tribal set aside to address habitat restoration. So it's quite possible, actually, the Dungeness Nature Center, there, um, might have received some, the restoration, maybe the county received some for the levy setback, um, that they did along the Dungeness. Um, but specifically, um, Port Angeles, no. Um, I know that it's always a challenge, um, when the federal government identifies, oh, we've got this great project, um, economic, um, um, uh, centers, um, economic, um, the, the, the green, Emerald Green Economic Stimulus, um, dollars worth, they, they focus on trying to get people with a lot of money to invest in communities. Our, um, community, including Port Angeles, we, we put out a whole, um, effort to try to get, um, an investor to come into Port Angeles, um, to address some of our priorities. We were really pushing, um, housing, um, but even when, um, the federal government puts those out, and that was put out during the Trump era, um, we did not get any investors that were interested in investing housing or, um, in our community, unfortunately. So sometimes those, those, um, acts are, are hard to follow.
So what's going to be one, a long-winded explanation of I don't know and say, I don't know?
And i- isn't that the problem whenever we have fun fancy names for grants, bills, and everything else? Um, to quote me, no idea. Um, however, I do believe Kate is correct, I'm pretty sure Recompute was part of that. But it was also part of a subbill that had its own fun, unique acronym that someone came up with. Um, so assuming it is for a moment, um, I do know Peninsula College are a composite company that's here in town. Um, I believe the port, and, uh, there will also be business grants as well, that's Collin and Jefferson County, because it's a, uh, Recompute's a joint venture between our two counties. Um, those are specific entities that I'm aware of in Port Angeles specifically, who will be receiving funds for workforce development through that. Um, but I think, in a way, this brings up a better point of, we do a really bad job of advertising where we're getting funding for and announcing the grants that we use. Most people don't realize, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty-five percent of all of our road construction in town, grant-funded. Um, we don't pay for most of that. Um, we taxpayers pay for it. However, um, that burden is shouldered by residents of the state as well as the U S as a whole. Um, and so I think, uh, earlier it was mentioned that it would be nice if we could be solely self-sufficient, and grants would be a nice bonus. Truthfully, if we did that, the town would be in much more dire straits for this now. Um, for better or for worse, we are grant-dependent. Um, and if we cut things out, uh, to be used solely self-sufficient, we wouldn't have any roads, we wouldn't have body cameras for our police officers. Um, we wouldn't have a larger variety of things, um, or we'd have more taxes. I mean, that's, that's kind of the two ways it goes. We either go out and have a dedicated grant person to find federal funding for us, or state funding, or we raise taxes. Um, I do not support using grants to purchase or procure or build things that we then have to figure out how to continually maintain, however.
You were first, right? Okay, so now, I look, see, is there any other questions from the audience? Do what it wants. All right, so, we will then go to, um, is there any? We just did an online question, so I'll go to the re-submitted questions.
There is a comment, though, that's specific to the last question that came in from a
Okay. Federal money covered, so my wife and I needed a new water heater. Federal money covered the cost of a heat pump water heater. Through the Build Back Better bill was administered through the city, and we received two thousand dollars. And I bought the water heater at Thurston's. All right. Okay, so, um, this one, if it's okay, will reduce to a one-minute answer, because we're just gonna ask you to do some creative thinking. Um, so, name for us your absolute top issue that you want to see the city address, and then give us a very creative, out-of-the-box idea on how to get to it. But I'll give you a minute to think about that. I want the city to embrace community. And embracing community means let us all get together, talk. So we need town hall meetings on a regular basis. We need to re-establish the ethics rules that they took out in nineteen, two thousand nineteen. We need to make people feel like they are part of the community. And this is, um, there's a number of ways to do it, how some communities do it, is they have, um, a, a city dinner where all the restaurants get involved, and all the, and all people buy seats, and we all get together in this huge, huge area, such as the Burton Center, and have dinner together. We need to, to do more things to embrace people and to get people out of their homes and to, to unite, because that's the only way we're really a community.
I like your answer. I'm not gonna, I'll, I'll come up with something different, but I like your answer. Um, so you can just riff on that one. Yeah, I mean, that's a, there's so many things, right? And I actually think, one of, one, I will take a few minutes of my one minutes, one minute to say, I think we have been bold and creative when it comes to housing policy. And we have done things, but other, we're the only places, place in the state that has done it. Heard from our legislators that they talk about how we are leaders, um, in housing policy. And I think I want to see us continue the creative problem-solving that we have brought to housing, um, to whatever, um, we're going to continue to deal with. Um, and, well, there's not a creative solution to it necessarily. I'm, um, and I, because you asked me to pick one, I'm gonna throw in an extra one. Um, is, really want to continue our forward progress on our code rewrite. I think, uh, we've had really archaic code for a long time, and it's not sexy, but it's really important.
We go back up to it when it comes back. That's the way I can be sure.
I'm just gonna take more time.
Uh, well, I think for me, and seeing that we need development, um, I'd really like for us to actively pursue and identify in working with stakeholders in the community. Um, would be identifying an area where we can implement, where we can look at infrastructure needs of a large, large area, could be like a, a mile long, or, uh, I don't know, half-mile-long area from point A to point B, that we'd like to see developed. Um, and implement tax, uh, do a, a, a tip, tax incremental financing, which it pays for itself over the lifespan, so, so like twenty years. It, it ends up that infrastructure that is installed is paid for by, um, the development that occurs there over twenty years. Um, so, so I'd like to see us do something like that, because we talked about the need for housing, we talked about the need for, um, to, um, land or, um, business growth also, so.
So I would like the city try to accomplish less. Um, you know, when, when you go to see council, be, or to planning, there's this attitude that the city is on top, and the people are just keeping the city greased. And so I would like to reverse that equation, where it's the people that are on top, and the city's a mere utility. Um, you know, I, I would love to live in the county where I just, you know, I get my, my electricity and my water, and not have to go through all the regular role of, um, what I, what I consider to be, uh, overthinking everything. Um, we have, we have five different housing, uh, zones in our town. Well, you have one, we're in one square miles. Um, we have five different commercial zones in our town. Do we need five different commercial zones in a town of forty thousand or nothing's going to work?
Hopefully pouring water doesn't cut part of my time. Um, so, wow, I don't know how to narrow that down, because I have four things. So instead, I'm gonna go with a fifth one as my example, because it just ties everything together. And, um, it's already been kind of touched on, and that's better communication with the public in general. So, a couple of things I have been trying to push with and have successfully done. Um, at P A B A just last week was point out that on the Meet Your Council Members page on the city's website, doesn't actually have our contact information, you actually have to go to the staff directory to find it. Um, so I contacted staff, that's been changed, by the way. Will you please spell the A B A, P A B A that for me?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Um, so I've already changed that. Um, we also don't have phones, um, which was weird. So I did kind of push and manage to get us all, um, phone apps on our regular phones, so people can actually call us instead of calling the city's swish board. Um, and then we've also added a council liaison for every board, committee, and commission, um, that while we haven't started doing that yet, um, I suspect we'll be discussing that when we do our next assignments. Um, random things, though, that I have thought of out of the box, um, I would like to extend, uh, I will answer those questions later, should anyone want to know. Otherwise, they'll be at a later council meeting.
There's a, there's a trick, it's a Venice level, and it's, it's that you, you answer the question you wish you were asked, not the one you were asked. And so, look, to Drew's point, we gotta walk and treat them at the same time. So, um, I, I'm just, I'm just gonna go with something that I'm remembering, and that's economic development. As far as creative, what I think is that we need more engagement from our city staff and our council members. You know, there was a time under Mayor Downey where he would show up and engage with, um, prospective businesses, okay? So like, we don't have a direct role in that, per se, but we also serve, I hope to also serve, as an ambassador, as your council member. So, look, you know, when, when Commerce puts out its list of, uh, of likely, uh, businesses, and U D C picks that up with thirty thousand dollars a year, we give them and brings it to, um, and brings it to city staff, you know? I think that we need to have robust communication between staff, those businesses, and council members that make the case, that advocate for their community. Why are people are the best employees, because they are? And why our community is the best place to start their job, because it is.
Do we have an online question, Ellen?
No, we do not. Okay.
You're ready to be first, right? Okay, I don't know.
Question.
Okay. Um, what is the best approach to protect our watersheds? And part of that is a discussion around L W A, and whether or not you should preserve a legacy forest in our effective watershed, or should that be logged? That, that, all that's part of that discussion.
So this is a ten-minute answer, but I'll give it in, we have two, do we have two again? Thirty seconds now. So, um, I did, I have supported the council action to, um, actions the council has, has taken in an attempt to protect the watershed. And that did include, um, asking for a pause, and I did support the trust and transfer application. I voted in support of that, um, of the, the timber stands in the watershed. We, what we originally asked for, just a really quick background, for three years, we tried reaching out to Hillary France with concerns, uh, she was the, um, head of D N R, Commissioner of Public Lands, we tried reaching out to her. Commissioner Philip Lance, we tried reaching out to her saying we have concerns. We reached out initially by staff in the public comment period about one of the timber harvests. Um, that was up um, for the next uh, Board of Natural Resources. And for three years, we wrote. We wrote another letter, we wrote letters from council, signed by me on behalf of council. We got one email in all of that, saying here's the, first, here's. Here's our response, and it was, the process is done and we don't have to talk to you. So, um. I think it is incumbent upon us to continue to work with DNR. To ensure that we feel comfortable with the areas that they're talking about logging. That it won't impact the Elwah River, it is our sole municipal water source. We do have an unfunded project in our capital facilities plan to do um, groundwater testing. For the possibility of potentially building some kind of infrastructure for groundwater as backup. But that is never going to be enough to serve the whole community and that's a very long process. So, um, I think the recent Indian Creek spill shows us how vulnerable our watershed is. And we need to continue to um, work with the state in particular, um, and with the local tribe. Uh, with Laura Elwah on um, how we can continue to protect it.
Well, it's not there, goes all the way back up to.
Alright, well Kate, you said that very nicely. And so I'm gonna say ditto to what Kate just said and add on to that. That the Elwah watershed, eighty-seven percent of the Elwah watershed is already protected in the National Park Service. I mean, to me, this is kind of a, a no-brainer, you have thirteen percent of the Elwah watershed. Outside of the National Park Service that we just with our taxpayer dollars. This was at the federal level, we just invested for hundred eighty-nine million dollars to protect the upper watershed. It just makes sense, let's protect the, the thirteen percent outside of the National Park Service. It's, the thirteen percent is private ownership, you've got some state ownership. County ownership on where the state manages some of those. And then you also have tribal ownership, it's a conglomerate of different ownerships down there. But we are, it makes sense to call out the State Department of Natural Resources to say, hey, look. The way that we've been doing timber harvest, and we have these gorgeous, beautiful stands in the riparian zones along Indian Creek. Along Little Creek, Little River, along the main stem of the Elwah. It makes sense to preserve these timber stands to preserve the city's sole water source. So not only are we looking at protecting the sole water source. But those, that, that area, that, that watershed. Brings people from out of the area to, to participate in recreation. And I mean, I, I talked with a, a lady about a week ago. She remembers going to the um, Elwah and looking at um, the blind scanning down. And she says, that's what inspired me to move out here, I love this, this area, this community, I participate in the recreation out here. So, not only is that our sole water source, but it's also impacts our tourism dollars for people coming in from out of the area.
So it seems to me that if eighty-seven percent is protected. And then another three thousand acres via this uh, letter that uh, was written to the DNR. Is protected and if that. The minority of the flow into Little River is up in the National Park and protected. And that. Riparian zones are protected. That. Our watershed is protected. The idea that, oh, we need to protect it more. It seems that we've already protected it, I, so the question keeps coming up, well, we need more protection, we need more protection. But it gets extended past that, um, the idea of legacy forests. Not only protects the Elwah, but it, it impens, it impinges upon the. Uh, Department of Natural Resources land, which pays for our junior tax base. So, the more you protect. Outside of the Elwah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the Elwah a protection vote. But the more you protect outside the Elwah, is directly impactive of our economic viability. So we, we do need to have balance. Seventy-seven thousand acres um, is, is being quote-called legacy forest. Which is gonna remove that from the tax base that supports our school, supports our school, supports the port. And the more we protect, I mean, we could protect absolutely everything and then have no economy at all. You know, so, so this is, this is a fine line that went, you know, I think we've protected enough, the idea that we.
Um, so I think the best approach to protect the Elwah watershed is to evolve the science and have a working relationship with DNR. I'm not an envi, I am not a professional environmentalist or have any sort of environmental degrees. Um, so I have to trust the information that I'm being given. Based on that, I have supported all the council actions that I've been a part of so far to protect the watershed. Um, a lot of these conversations started prior to me being on council. So I did have to get up to speed and figure out what plots we were even talking about and what tributaries were where. Um, so I understood. At the end of the day, for me, what it comes down to is, we're already. An oasis away from everything, um, the canal bridge goes down, we have problems. I live on pine in between the bridges, bridges go down, I have problems. Everyone in town has problems because we're so isolated, we have one water source. So unless we come up with a way to do solar desalinization, um, I'm gonna protect that at all costs. Because I wanna make sure we have drinkable water. And uh, my understanding is in the past, DNR has basically said, we don't care about you. Um, your opinion doesn't matter. Uh, we have a new person um, with DNR who does seem to be receptive and willing to talk with us. Uh, which is a great advantage. So for me, the best way to protect the Elwah watershed is to follow the trusted science. Um, and make sure we maintain good relationships, especially with DNR. Um, but also the other stakeholders and um, organizations and private companies who aren't along the watershed.
Yeah, similar answer, they, I mean, you know, almost forget, evolve the science, follow the data. Build relationships with our state uh, leaders. And, you know, I'm gonna put a slightly different spin on this, though, we've all, we all seen um, during the most recent people, uh, still. How delicate this infrastructure is, right? And this is a creek being entered, or not just the Elwah. So, y- you know, there's a saying that says, that the way the salmon go, we go. Okay, and that's important because that's a delicate ecosystem. And one that, you know, our existence in a remote area is balanced on as well. So it is truly important to follow the science, follow the data and listen to the experts. But look, if we're not doing that, if we're taking risks that are unnecessary. Then we, how do we put our, our, our watershed at risk, our water supply at risk? Well, we've got hundred-year-old infrastructure. Um, we've got hundred-year-old pipes underneath us, and how many main breaks did we have last year? Several, because I would drive out to each one of them. And so every time we do that, we are risking a water shortage. And it should be, you know. These main braids, oil spills, they should just. They should just tell us how delicate our uh, and vulnerable our water source is. And we should be making every effort to protect that water source, that doesn't mean that we're not. You know, that we're not logging outside of watershed, certainly we are sustainable forestry, you know, is. Is uh, something that our, our community is built on, and I hope that we continue to explore sustainable avenues there. But look, we've gotta protect our watershed.
I have nothing to add, next question. So, we are winding down, it's almost seven thirty, so this is your last chance for a question from the audience. If you've asked one, so let's see if there's anybody else. Okay, so we have another question?
Yes, it should be great.
The people online said they couldn't hear you really well, so speak right into the microphone.
Before you ask your questions, because our time is winding down, we're gonna do one-minute answers. Live, here's a question, I have one more here, and then. So we'll get you out of here on more or less on time, go ahead.
Did you start Boston? So I read, I've read uh, quite a few sources citing that Big Tech, Apple, Amazon. Have uh, affordable housing funds. They want to participate in affordable housing, Amazon, I think has committed two billion dollars. Um, I don't remember, Apple, Microsoft, they all have big commitments. And, you know, they are having trouble getting these things done. Because of permitting issues on the ground. How can we as a city accommodate this and maybe get, I don't know, two percent of that two hundred billion, maybe forty million dollars? Thank you.
So, um, if it's okay, we'll reduce one minute, that's right, okay, and so now we're back to Letitia, your number one.
Or, great question, and I'm gonna start off with an, I, I don't know, um. I, I've heard about um, Apple, Microsoft, like Seattle area building housing. For um, low income and, and um, the, the efforts that they've done in the metro area. By trying to get them to come out into the rural area to share some of the, the, those funds. It, it's gonna be a challenge, I think that we have to show, if we're gonna make an argument for them to do that. Is that um, they, that they are impacting our area, um. Like maybe now that Amazon has a distribution center out here, that may be uh, an entity that we can ask. You know, if you have um, affordable housing fund, could you help supplement some of our. Um, affordable housing funds that we utilize for help affordable housing, for low-income housing.
Give the answer you wanna give rather than answer the question. Um, affordable housing is significantly impacted by uh, the advanced uh, building codes. Uh, since uh, if you build a house in Georgia. It's gonna cost you eighty thousand less to build the same house here. That's because we just keep augmenting and augmenting and adding to the energy codes. And we, it's, it's up to every single Democrat. To contact their state legislatures and say, Washington, please leave the energy codes alone. It shows out of control, and you know, it's like, well, you know, we're saving the planet, but no one can afford to live here. So, um. Please, please call, contact your state legislatures and say. You know, stop this madness of just over, overdoing of energy codes.
Okay, let's see how fast I can condense this into my brain. Um, so a good way to go about it is to find out why are they having problems with permitting in other cities? Um, without knowing that, I don't actually know if we would have a problem if they came to our city to build affordable uh, and affordable housing. Um, we have started to reduce permitting costs for those multifamily housing. Um, ADUs, so smaller sized buildings that you can build multiple in a lot. We have permit-ready plans, you can just get a free plan and then pay for the permit and then build it. Um, so I would want to know what difficulties uh, these big tech companies are necessarily having. If I were to guess, I suspect the reason why they're not coming out here has nothing to do about building affordable housing. Um, I have a feeling that it has more to do with infrastructure, specifically our internet infrastructure and internet reliability. And that's probably why they're not investing um, out here. Um, so, but that is a conversation that I'd like to follow up with and see if I can find out more of how can we get those big tech dollars. Um, and companies to come out here.
For one, send me the article, I'd like to like, I'd like that they look at it. Uh, ten percent of our, we, what we learned at the last council meeting, what last work session was ten percent of the workforce here. Lives in large metro areas like King County, Pierce, you know, CLW, that kind of thing, right? So like, we have people that work out of town. So what I would say, you know, how do we get some of those dollars? Is that we say, we have houses here and we're going to invest in our infrastructure, we're going to invest in our fiber, we're going to invest in our, our roads. And, you know, through the state, our highways, so that it's an option for some of your employees to live here and work remotely. And then, you know, perhaps work hybrid and then go, go back into the city for a certain amount of days. So, look, I think when you approach these, when you approach them, it's certainly something that, you know, should be explored, is. What is in it for them? And so what's in it for them is if it's too dense, if it's too expensive in the King County metro area. Then maybe the alternative is investing some of those dollars out here.
Okay, I started in computers in nineteen eighty-one, I was in the microcomputer revolution. Um, I know Bill Gates, I know, I've, I've met Bezos, I've met Peter Thiel. My husband's a computer columnist with PC Magazine for many years with millions of, of readers. Um, I know for a fact that Microsoft wanted to build out here and Bill Gates has a large compound. I think it's up Blue Mountain or Lost Mountain. And I know that, that his second-in-command, Steve Ballmer, used to come out here all the time and had a place. Um, I know that I brought a presentation to the city back a few years. When Google wanted to do a mesh network out here and the city turned us down. Um, no one's ever asked anybody. You know, it's not, these are just people, you know. We need to come, if you come up with a proposal, you bring it to them, if it makes sense to them financially, they do it. That's how the world is done, we don't have to sit and beg, we don't have to worry how to do anything, we just have to not be assholes. When people do come to us and say, hey, we, we wanna invest in your community.
I don't know if their projects are based on where they have employees. Um, but um, Amazon is set to do some construction here. Um, so one of the things that um, I think. Is worth noting is that we were the first um, municipality in the county anyway. Um, and count, counting the county as a municipality to adopt the state, the new state standards that came out of the last legislative session. Um, last year for permit timelines. So, if you come and build here, you have predictability because we have set timelines for your permitting process. So you're not gonna lose your subcontractors because you, your permit isn't ready, you can plan and be ready to go. Um, I think that's a big bonus for um, builders like that, I would love to have them come out. Um, as was already mentioned, we have waived a number of permit fees for um, multifamily housing. Um, things that qualify in that without, I only have ten seconds left, um, then no time. I know, we don't have impact fees.
So now, in order to honor the people who've submitted things online, I'm gonna do a lightning round.
Okay.
With this last question, and it starts James, you're gonna be first.
Just hover around the mic, we'll all answer once.
So just answer as, in as concise a way as you can, not exceeding one minute, hopefully, or less. Do you support total cleanup at the Rainier Mill site referred to as option five by Department of Ecology?
It runs with town does, and so I will support it. Option three won't work, um, because option five, all that does is take the mess that's in our neighborhood and give it to somebody else to deal with. So, uh, but since the town is supportive of option five, then as, as a city councilperson. I'm here to represent the town and the town's wants, not my particular perspective.
Okay, just wanna make sure, you did say the option that is for the total cleanup, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Option five.
Before I say I support the wrong one, yes, I support the option that involves the total cleanup of the site. I, I don't really have anything else to add to that, if I guess, please clean up the entire site.
Yes, are we gonna pay for it? Well, we need to talk to Rainier and say, you need to, you need to do your part in that, okay? And we need to talk to ecology and say, we need to speed this up, it's already been going for, you know. There, there you go, thirty-five years, okay, can we do it, it can be done, yes, let's find a way, let's find a way to do it quickly. There's an example, Point Ruston, if you look at Point Ruston, that was a highly polluted area. And it is a beautiful place right now that brings in higher-income homes and commercial real estate. So I'm not saying that's what should go there, I'm just saying, let's get it cleaned up and let's see what's possible.
I've heard about this way too long, yes, five, let's just do it, I'm sick of it. Yes, I support um, option five, the full cleanup. Um, we were able to, the city felt strongly enough about it that we hired a consultant to do our own science. Which actually significantly differs from ecology science about the cost. Of a full cleanup compared to a cost of the option that they currently suggested. And unlike DNR, they actually are paying attention to us and engaging with us and talking to us and are seriously considering. Um, the, the new information that we have presented, and I think the community. Um, spoke loud and loudly and. Spoke loud and loudly and clearly and as a united front. In a way that I have not seen before, that what we want is a full cleanup. There are appropriate places to put that dirt, and yes, it's in someone else's neighborhood, but it is. An established site where that is protected and not. A seven foot, already seven foot mound that from the trail, you can't see the water.
We start with James, so you have.
Yes, I I I support the full cleanup of the Rainier Mill site. It's vital for our community. For public access to be able to get to the beach. I strongly feel that the near shore should always be public access and not privately owned. As Rainier has it. But yes, we need a whole Department of Ecology and Rainier accountable and. Again, do everything that Mayor Dexter said. Because that report that we got about the analysis of a cost lineup was eye opening. And then very enlightening. And I gotta tell you, it's the first time being in city council, sitting in chambers with that many people in there. There was unanimous consent by every single person in that room. It felt really good.
Thank you all. And now as our closing, we will start down this end of the table on closing comments. You get two minutes each.
All right, I don't think my sort of prepared closing takes two minutes. So I just wanted to say, I also think that the RACE grant program may be a part of the Build Back Better Act. And that we were the lead applicant on a multi-jurisdictional application for. A grant to fund the planning to get. Shovel ready projects for all of the gaps in the Olympic Discovery Trail between Bainbridge Island and the coast. And we received a fourteen million dollar grant to do that work. And so hopefully, that will actually come to fruition. Over the last seven years, thirty seconds and two minutes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I need the one minute timer. Sorry.
That's the weirdest time. Okay, so I will just wrap up by saying, thank you for having us. Over the last seven years, I've been dedicated to listening to constituents and providing calm, level-headed leadership during difficult community issues. I am also committed to getting back out into the community. And we used to be at the farmer's market, at the library, at the high school. And I'm committed to, in January, when we redo the council assignments, having a schedule for us to do that again. The next few years will likely be challenging, and we have so much to do. I'm hopeful that by the end of the next four-year term, we will have a fully functional. Joint public safety facility. I continue to be a proponent of increasing childcare, developing meaningful solutions to the housing crisis. Supporting first responders, partnering with other local government agencies, and working to support local agencies responding to the continued opioid crisis. And all the other safety net organizations that are going to be very much needed. We need to work together to ensure that no one is left behind and that we continue working together toward a resilient Port Angeles.
We're just going back after one.
Okay. So let me state the obvious. I'm an old woman. I've lived a long life, working as hard as any man. I'm an old woman in a world that does not have one meaningful word for wise old female. I'm a mom, a granny, a great grandmother soon. I'm a matron, a matriarch, or maybe I'm just an old woman. Look at me. Can you see my experience? Can you see my dreams, my vision, my drive? Can you hear my passion? I'm old. I've had a full life. I do not seek office for my ego or for status or prestige. Or to fill some lonely void in my life. I have other things to do with my remaining years. By God's grace, with your vote, we can help the town that we love. You are my neighbors, my friends. Some of you are barely hanging on, scraping to get by. Local government keeps growing, not helping. Taxes burden us all. Our city council is floundering, confusing wants with needs, confusing motion with action. Piling on things that we can't afford. It's time for change. I have a dream of a prosperous Port Angeles. I have a dream where our youth are nurtured and encouraged. I have a dream where businesses are supported. Port Angeles is our community. This is where we live, the town that we love. The vote for creativity, vision, and experience. I didn't say vision, but I spent to say it. Thank you.
So hey, spoiler alert, I'm running on a post. But look, I'm not, I was never gonna run against an opponent anyway, okay? No matter who put their name in the hats. I'm running for things. I'm running for public safety. I'm running for affordable housing. I'm running for economic development. And so, look, I'm not just looking for your vote, I'm looking for your voice. I'm looking for your partnership. I'm looking to get involved on your behalf and for you to hold me accountable. So that's all I got, you know, it's as simple as that. I wake up every morning on my days off. I run to the coffee shop, I grab a cup of coffee, and I start driving around town. And I started looking for water main breaks. I started looking for new housing projects. I know it's dirty, right? But like, that's what I do, you know? It's like, I care about this stuff. So, you know, you might see me in the morning cruising the streets and checking out these things and looking at how our unhoused population is doing and driving by a serenity house and all, look, all the things. I mean, I think what you deserve is a council member who is obsessively concerned with the health, safety, and welfare of their community and obsessively curious. And, look, that's me. So I'm asking for your vote and I'm asking for your support.
So it sounds like I could basically just crib Mark's stuff and be actually wrote it down, because that would be really easy for me. So instead, first, I'll just go ahead and go back to a couple of things, since I have a full two minutes and no one who's arguing against me. As far as the PA business licensing goes, I specifically made sure that our motion had what that money is gonna be used for. I don't remember the specific order we did it in, but downtown resource officer, code enforcement officer, homeless navigator, and business liaison. Code enforcement officers, we've already got another one, thanks to it, and the downtown resource officer, we've already got another one for. So I made sure that motion specifically included what that money was gonna be used for. Also, going back to how to communicate. Better with the council. The three things that come up so far is figuring out how to do town hall meetings that do not violate the Open Public Meeting Act. That's its own ten-minute conversation about that. Going back to meeting greets, as Mayor Dexter's already mentioned, we did use to go to farmer's markets and other locations. Since COVID, council has stopped doing that. The other out of left field, out of the box one that I'm slowly trying to push. Is during council meetings, instead of five-minute bathroom breaks, we have ten-minute bathroom breaks. Because five minutes is just enough time for me to actually go to the bathroom and not have time to actually engage with anyone who may be in the audience. So if we have ten-minute breaks, I can actually talk to the people who have come in person. Having said that, so again, basically cribbing from Mark. My focus is public safety, homelessness, affordable housing, and economic development. I feel like having been on the Public Safety Advisory Board, being on the Planning Commission, being. On the Port Angeles Downtown Association Board and being business owner for almost the last sixteen years gives me a very good. Point of view and background to be able to try to work on those issues. Thank you.
I feel the city needs a fresh vision. One that listens to the entire community, not just to a selective audience. The limited agenda item that allows for things not on agenda be discussed. You go, you go, you go to the presentation and here's all kinds of people that speak to the agenda with no opposition. That is restriction of free speech to the people that would be opposed. We need a city that says yes to business. Not one that says, oh, we have these permits and these hoops you gotta jump through. The hoops and jumping needs to be done by the city to get that business online. I support the expansion of the urban growth boundary. I don't know who the two people were that were opposed to it, but the. The, you know, some of my connections, I just told that they were opposed. We need to make law, what do we call our executive session? They're having the last go-around of the S T R song and dance. City council just zipped into an executive session. There's no explanation of why there was an executive session. And it might have violated the rules for an executive session. I've met with local business leaders. I've talked to them all. I spend my time. Talking to the people that make this city work. Now, unfortunately, they all live out of town and aren't voted for me. We need to have a city council that's not tied down in ideology. That S T R rewrite punish five people. Why?
Hello, I'm Latricia Sims. I'm from Port Angeles. I've been here for fifty plus years and I raised. I went through the school system. I worked in Port Angeles. My first job as a little kid, working in Cameron Berry Farms, picking berries, riding the Cameron Berry bus. My next job, picking up litter for Department of Ecology along our highways, when I was fifteen and a half. Sixteen, Burger King. I've got a long history of living and working. I've raised my family here. My grandchildren are being raised here. I've worked in this community and I have dearly loved this community. It just means the world to me. Everybody who lives here is valued and heard. And the one great thing about our community is when we need to step up as a community, our community does that. We stepped up during COVID when our nonprofit organizations. Were having a challenge with an influx of funding. Council stepped up and said, our ARCA funds, let's direct those to those. Those organizations. Let's direct funding to Black Ball Ferry, to keep the Black Ball Ferry afloat. Because we knew of the important connection here between our community and Victoria, Canada. I I want to continue to work towards those important things that are impacting our community. Housing, infrastructure. We have pipes in the ground that are over a hundred years old. Again, we need to replace that infrastructure. It's gonna cost money, but we need to do it responsibly. Passing a budget, addressing our sole water source, protecting the environment, the watershed in which we live. Again, thanks, Mark, for referring to the salmon, the bear canary in the coal mine for us. We don't have a healthy watershed. We don't have salmon. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for, all the candidates for attending and thanks the audience here for attending and asking some questions. And for the online crew, thank you too for your time. And so we are going to call it a turn.